Just don't go out and get it. I go to. I like to go to Daniel Boone Inn up there in Boone.
Yeah, yeah. And we, that's probably the same place we get our from. We get it out of North Wilkes-Barre.
Do you? Yeah.
Yeah. We get it straight from the supplier.
We don't even get a token citizen.
Well, something happens and you get some, let me know. I'll take a couple, at least a couple of packs. If y'all do it.
I'll do it to it. Be sure to. I'm learning.
I'm learning.
You good?
I'm sorry.
I'm learning. I'm gonna pass on the invocation.
Jim, the camera thing's not coming up.
Here we go.
We have no citizens, so we have no citizens comments.
Well, maybe just nobody's.
Do y'all need to put a recorder up here, or?
Yeah.
This is the backup.
No picture on here, just so you know. It's not coming up.
But, but you did click the Zoom link, in case.
Yeah, it's launched. And it says it's recording.
Good. Miss Thacker, would it help you to have one of those folding tables here for you to get in front of us? Do you need to spread out? We'll get one out for you. You know, it's up to you.
Or do you want to move over here to this table?
Now we're going.
It is seven o'clock, March the third, twenty twenty-two. The estimable mayor's birthday. Tonight, we're having a special meeting for, uh, budget conversations. We're gonna forego the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. In that we have no citizens in the gallery, we are gonna forego the citizens comments. Are there any citizens that would like to speak?
Online.
Online. Discussion and vote to decide format of town, town of Stokesdale's Town Council Budget Workshop Meetings.
But before we dive into that, just so for the record, we have advertised this meeting publicly. It went out on the Sunshine List and notice has been in their front window. And we just don't have anybody showing up. Is that correct, Ms. Martin?
She also put it on Facebook, just extra.
Okay. The item number four here, I asked for, um, Ms. Martin and I had a little back and forth. And prior to that, this council, we discussed how we were gonna conduct our budget workshop meetings. Whatever y'all wanna do here, but what I was concerned about, from my own point of view, is I, I trying to avoid having a meeting where we have to have the town attorney present to go over the budget. Trying to avoid a meeting where we have to keep, you know, pay the staff to keep minutes when there's really nothing to, nothing to keep minutes about except a discussion. And, uh, by extension of that, I don't think it's appropriate to have a public comment period. As long as we just have one or two people show up, that's great. If we have thirty people show up, they will be, most likely be showing up to ask for money. Nobody ever really comes down and asks for us to cut the budget. They complain about it at the gas station, the grocery store, and everywhere else. And so, uh, I wanted these meetings to, to be named a budget workshop. The regu- regular town meetings, you know, we had to have one a month and it has to be on the calendar. There is an emergency, emergency meeting protocol in the statutes. This is certainly not an emergency meeting. And then the third option, best up, my recollection with the statute, there's no particular, the council has the option of choosing whatever it wants to in regards to naming that meeting. And so, uh, and this is consistent with how that I have participated in budget meetings in the past in the building. So, that, that's why I'm trying to get to a budget workshop meeting. And so, those are my concerns. I, I'll let, you know, council take that into consideration. Y'all tell me what you wanna do.
Um, I, I think that, I'm funny about the citizens comments. I, I think that maybe we should, we could limit the citizens comments. I understand people make it show up to, to want money or something. Maybe somebody would show up for us to help us cut the budget. I'd, I'd love to see that sometime. I know in the past, we've had council folks that would, uh, would say, uh, you come on down, it's your money, you know, tell us how to spend it and, and all that. I'd love to invite people to come down, tell us how we can cut the budget and not spend so much. But, um, eh, I, um, I don't, I don't mind the, the input. I mean, um, I, I don't, um, you know, I wanna, I wanna keep the budget tight, but I just, um, I, I'm funny about the citizens comments. Even if I don't agree with them, I still like to hear them, even, even, even with this. And I don't wanna, I'd hate to get in a long drawed out thing about it, but that's just a chance we take.
I concur with Mr. Landreth. I think citizen comments, um, goes to the foundation of our charter being for the people.
Well.
And, um, but I do, I agree with limiting it to maybe three minutes or something like that.
Then that puts us having to keep a set of minutes, uh, with, you know, for those citizen comments and what having the staff will have to, have to write a set of minutes then, to my way of looking at it. Again, I was trying to get as, keep it as simple as possible. I, I, you know, can't disagree with Mr. Landreth's comments either, but no minutes, no attorney, no public comments, and no votes. So we could kinda stay streamlined, but hey, I, I got till all the way in the morning. I can stay here as long as y'all want to.
Well, I, I agree with a no attorney. I don't see any reason for the attorney to have to sit here right now. And, uh, and I agree with the citizens comments being, uh, being about the budget. Cause that's what we're here for. And, you know, the, um, of course, we'll have a recording available. I don't know why we have to be so detailed with the minutes. Uh, we're, we're just discussing. We'll be throwing things on the wall, so it really, really what's gonna matter about what we have to say is what we finally do. So, I think we, I think we can keep it under control. We haven't, I mean, we haven't had a lot show up in, in the past and, uh,
Okay, if we're going to have what amounts to a special meeting, we're gonna vote, keep minutes, have the public comment periods. We probably won't need the attorney.
Right.
Sorta makes this discussion mute. One other thing that I'll mention, having participated in this process a few times, is we go, we have budget meetings and we, we wrestle back and forth, moving numbers around, add line items, delete line items, modify them. And we never make any small votes. So at the end of the day, when the budget's presented to the town, it's held open for thirty days, if I recall, and then we vote on the budget. So it, it's, it's one big decision. So if, if there's something in the budget I just absolutely can't support that amounts to three percent, and I'm okay with the ninety-seven percent, then, then I have to make a choice between voting for the budget or not voting for the budget based on my concern about that three percent. And, uh, that has happened to me. And, and guys, I don't know how to fix it. I'm just pointing out a, an issue that I've have observed over time. And so those are the, uh, the things I jotted down here to, to bring up with you guys. And so there it is.
We could always, if there's a, a line that's, uh, up in the air, we could always take a vote on, well, I don't guess we can vote in a workshop meeting, okay?
Well, the workshop's what we call it. This is a special called meeting under the statute. We, we, the verbiage we use is a budget workshop.
We, for, we would be legally voting on anything pertaining to the budget tonight. I, I don't, I couldn't see a problem with that if somebody wanted to make a motion and I have us vote. The one thing that, you know, like Mr. Landreth is big on the public comments, I'm very big on telling our citizens, we're just having a workshop meet, we're gonna talk about the budget. And then we come in here and vote, and our citizens, you know, didn't attend because they weren't expecting a vote, or vice versa, for that matter. I just, I just think we need to be clear about this somehow. I'm okay either way.
Any vote tonight?
Hold on a second. Let me finish. You know I'm slow. All right. I just wanna be sure that we carry through whatever we tell the citizens. If we tell them we ain't gonna be doing any voting, then, then, you know, I'm not go, I don't wanna vote, and vice versa.
That's absolute.
And so I'll.
I would look at a vote tonight maybe more as direction for Kim to continue to mold, uh, the budget. I think she's put together kind of a good first pass that, you know, we can discuss tonight, but the, the ultimate vote will be in June. You know, we're, this would become an ordinance, uh, and whatever, whatever the, we're making the sausage right now, and whatever the output is gonna be, is gonna be the up and down vote to, to June. Uh, just, you, you know, and this'll be, I guess, Jim and Jimmy and I's third, third budget. The, the first budget we had was, was messy. Uh, Kim was, Kim was brand new. She, she wasn't a staff member yet. She was, uh, I guess you could just say she was in the process of transitioning to become a full-time staff member, but at the time, she was the town accountant. And so it, it was a messy experience. Uh, last year, I thought Kim laid out a pretty good template of, you know, seeing past history, uh, on some of the more fixed expenses for the town, and, and an example of the fixed expense that, you know, something that might kind of duplicate itself within reason year over year, such as the electric bill or something like that.
I got you.
Looking at history there. And then really, there's only just a handful of items that are kind of at council discretion, such as, uh, park spending, capital investment, or, you know, like the events or, uh, uh, Community Day. But, uh, I thought last year was a success. Our first budget, we, uh, you know, was an experience. Uh, and, and I think, you know, she's built a good template this year that she can, you know, it's a first pass. It's a rough draft.
Okay. Uh, if the council would, mayor, if you would allow me, I'd like to make a motion. And that would be that we call these four scheduled workshop meetings a special call budget workshop meeting, so that we segregate them from the other special call meetings that, that are conducted in this building to try to put some order to this. I don't really care what we call them, e- except for, uh, if we work the word, word budget in there, it's pretty clear to everybody out there what's going on. And, and I don't wanna change the name of it every, every meeting. So we've, we've had five meetings with five different names.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's the purpose of my v- motion.
I, I will, I will second that. I'd like to put a friendly amendment that we add in there that, uh, the citizens comments will be pertaining to the budget. Since we do have citizens comments for the, you know, regular, regular meetings. If that's okay.
Well.
Or do you need to do that?
What I was gonna do is, is make a motion, or make motions on the other things that we just discussed pertaining to the public comments, the minutes and the votes.
Well, I'll rescind that. I'll take that.
Okay.
Just gonna have a second still.
Yeah, you still got a second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Right. Jim?
I'm good. Yeah.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm also aye.
Next motion.
Uh, okay, I'll make a motion that these, these meeting, budget workshop, special call budget workshop meetings that we've scheduled, that council will be allowed, that we will, uh, be able to vote during these budget workshop meetings on the budget, that minutes will be kept. And, uh, that unless some special need comes up, that we will try to avoid having, uh, the town attorney present to save cost. And that we'll have, we will have two public comment periods with, uh, three to five minute limits on them.
I'll second that motion.
Pertaining, let's add this, pertaining to the budget alone.
Yes, sir. We, we can, we can put that in there, but just. Uh, if a battle starts, people have their First Amendment rights and you can't limit them specifically to a.
Understand, but I can't call somebody out of order.
No, you can't actually.
I can't?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll talk sometime.
Okay.
So, uh, that's my motion.
And I've seconded that.
Jim?
Aye.
Derek? Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I'm also aye.
Okay, that wouldn't.
Any more?
Okay.
Discussion of the annual budget.
So, so Kim will present this, uh, budget. I do wanna say, I made a request of Kim last night to put on her spreadsheet the FY twenty-one actuals from the, uh, straight from the, uh, audit last year, and also the FY twenty-one, FY twenty-two actuals year to date. We have a, a reference point kind of all in one document. So thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
You got the floor.
Okay. As you guys can see, I just took, this is just a base for us to begin with. I did take, uh, in the general, I'm in the general fund. Uh, so, the general fund, I have got our total income at four hundred and forty-three thousand, which does include the Small Town Development Grant. I did put that in there because I know that you guys had talked about that. And to offset that, I put it in Park Investments, and that was just to offset it in the budget. So you guys can decide what you want to do with that, of course. Um, as far as the split allocation, I took the split allocation on the salaries. And I just, I did, uh, just raise the salaries as far as for the, uh, limit, um, not the limit, the, uh, cost of living raise, just a smidge. Of course, you know, you guys can do what you would like with that as well. However, the split allocation for the general fund would be forty-seven percent, and then the water fifty-three percent is the split allocation percentage. And of course, the fifty-three percent is what the water would reimburse the general fund for the expenses. Um, and we have those under, give me just a second. Let me find that.
So Kim, can you explain the split allocation process and, you know, the thought behind that, uh, in, in terms of?
Well.
How we arrive at that?
Yes. Um, that was introduced a couple of years ago, um, when I did come on board, um, not as an employee. Because I did ask the question, I posed, proposed the question several times when I was contract, why did the general fund pay for everything? Because, uh, you know, all the water expenses are done underneath Town Hall as well. And, um, so after speaking with, uh, the town auditor, uh, Mr. Rouse, and contacting the UNC School of Government, and also, uh, clarifying with the attorney, of course, we found out this was legal to do. So, we decided to do it with the salaries. And, um, so the salaries we take, the total salaries, this does not include Gary's salary. This is just the employee, the staff, uh, which would be Prius, Dale, myself, and Robin. And we take those salaries and, um, allocate a percentage per person. For instance, Prius, we've, uh, she's at ninety-five percent because she is, I would say ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent water.
Yes, to the water, correct. Um, Dale, we've got Dale at twenty percent to the water. Kim, uh, myself is fifty-fifty. And Robin, we have six, uh, thirty-five percent to the water. So, um, and we take those allocations and split and, uh, divide into the ro- the budgeted salary. And that's how we come up with a percent for the, the water fund versus the general fund.
And the items that are split, of course, we're gonna split the salaries, but also the indirect expenses, uh, that have to do the, with the operation of Town Hall.
Correct.
Uh, such as Town Hall electricity, uh, the phone, or the security alarm, you know, the audit.
Yep.
Health insurance, state retirement, so on and so forth.
IT, yes, IT, um, FICA, um, state retirement, and there is also office equipment purchase and repair, housekeeping for printing and office supplies and software, uh, insurance bonding and work, workman's comp.
I think Tim has a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, I have a question for somebody. I understand about the allocation. I would like for council to be provided a list of those items that are, that are allocated. You know, I see a bottle of hand sanitizer in front of me, so if, if, uh, office supplies are, are broken up, I'd like somehow to have a list of the things that, uh, are being allocated. And I, based on a previous meeting, I think I understood that the town attorney's time was not being split between the Water Enterprise Fund and the General Fund. I know we used to do that, in particular, if it was a significant amount of, uh, attorney time spent on a project or something. And, uh, it's, 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 all that would take, Mr. Medlin is supposed to do detailed, uh, detailed billing anyway, so it just seems like it wouldn't be that hard for him to split his invoice, but that's just me. So, I mean, what?
You, you, you know, I, I think items that we currently don't split that can, you, you make a, you, one can make a very valid argument for splitting it, of course, would be the attorney, stipends, and the last thing, uh, building maintenance, uh, or, or Town Hall improvements. Let's see the exact verbiage.
It's the Town Hall.
Town Hall repairs and maintenance. Is that right, Kim?
That's correct. Item forty-five hundred.
And to, to, to Tim's first point, i- as far as looking at the individual expenses that fall under a category, Kim can, you can easily export that into QuickBooks and share that with council.
Yes.
What, what percentage are you talking about?
Well, right now, a- any shared overhead expense, uh, all, all tracks back to the time, the staff at Town Hall works, kind of in each of, of their funds. So if, if we were to, to a- allocate Mr. Medlin or our stipends in the same manner, you know, that would be, I guess, this year, fifty-three percent to the water and forty-seven percent to the general fund. I believe in the current year we're in, uh, what is it, like fifty-one and a half percent water?
Forty-nine, yes, something.
Something like that.
Something like that.
For example, is the tan- general fund budget writing a check to the Water Enterprise Fund for the water that used at the Town Hall and at the park?
Right, right now, the reimbursement is coming from the water system to the general fund, the water, uh, Enterprise Fund to the general fund. As far as water consumption, I do not believe we write a bill for that.
Used to do it.
Sir?
It used to be done in this Town Hall.
That, I, I, I don't speak that. Ever since, uh.
It will do. Pretty sure about it, trust me. So, the, the way that, that I think the calculation was done as far as what the park usage was, uh, we would look at the history of water usage for Town Hall during the winter versus the summer and see where the bills peaked. And the assumption would be made that all that extra water was going down on the soccer fields, you know, when they were irrigating down there. So, you know, there again, you know, if the board doesn't wanna do that, hey, I'm cool with it. But I'd just like to have a list of these allocations, even if it, that, so that I know which ones are being addressed. I think that would help all of us here if we, if we just maintain the list.
So, I hear what you're saying, and I like that idea. When we get into the budget, uh, on page four or so, on the general fund, you will actually see the amounts, uh, broken down by line item.
No page number, so I turn four pages in?
Yes, sir. It's the last page of the general fund. And, and thi- this is the budgeted amount that will be reimbursed from the water fund for these specific line items. So.
And, and there's just could be instances when it goes the other way. That's, that's my point, and then that's one of them.
When the general fund would need to.
Pay the Water Enterprise Fund.
An, an example of, of, one instance, we do that today is, uh, because Gary is all water and does not work at Town Hall, his salary is reflected only in the Water Enterprise Fund. However, uh, payroll pays everybody from one account that's linked to the general fund. So Kim does have to stroke a check back to the water fund to reimburse that. So to your point, that, you know, would not be, uh, an unreasonable practice. We do it today.
All right. Are we allocating the cost of the town audit or some of these things? At some point, it would get ridiculous trying to divide up every last item. And I don't know what standard accounting practice would call for, if, if, you know, if I was an educated accountant. But that would be another example of a, of a big, uh, big expense, our town audit. Is the general fund paying all of that, or does the Water Enterprise Fund need to pay some of it? And I'm just asking a question. I don't know the answer.
It's reimbursed. We rem- we do the allocation split with the audit now as well.
And there, there again, if, if I had a list, I wouldn't have to ask, you know, somebody. And I'm old and forgetful too, so.
There is each, each month, when I, when I, um, supply you the budget, there is a list of what is allocated, um, at the bottom. However, but if you just want a general list, I'll be happy to take care of that too.
Anything else?
Oh, I'm, I'm sure there are lots of things, but, but that's, that's it. Well, one more question, Ms. Thacker. I see you have a chart of accounts evidently given the, the, uh, five-digit numbers that are to the left of each line item.
Yes.
That chart of accounts, where did it come from?
That from myself, because.
I- i- is it a recommended standard of practice that came from state fiscal management?
Uh, no, they actually say, no, it did not come from them. However, it is a item list. It's an, it's a categorized item number because before, they just listed the, um, title and then listed it. It's easier to keep up this, with this way, is what I'm trying to say.
I- in, in the past, we did discuss using the state's standardized chart of accounts. I think they have one, forgive me, that's about all I remember. So I was just, I noticed those numbers and was, and I was asking if they coincided with the, the states. And you say, no, there's something you're using internally.
Yes, I would, yes. But I will check on the states as well.
Well, I'm, I'm not asking for a change. I just, you know, I'm trying to understand, be sure I understand the process.
Anything else? You good? Any further discussion?
We, yeah, I'm like for, you, you know, Ken, Kim's got, she, she's discussed the revenue. I mean, it, it, in, in my opinion, the revenue items look reasonable. The one area I would be a little wary of, because it's such a large source of revenue, is the state collected utilities revenue. That has stayed, uh, the three hundred and fifteen thousand is in the budget. E- e- you know, the theory would be as the town grows, that amount of money would, uh, kind of grow directly with that, but that has been remarkably flat, uh, between two hundred and ninety-five and three hundred and twenty thousand, uh, the last ten or fifteen years. So that figure really doesn't coincide with the growth of the town of Stokesdale. So, it's, you know, one, one area to keep an eye on. We've only, we received those payments from the state quarterly. And, uh, Sept- I guess, will September be the first quarterly check we got?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd, maybe you know the answer to this. Town Hall and Park Facility Rentals, budgeted one thousand. I saw an email circulated recently, and I think it had a figure of twenty-eight hundred dollars that Stokesdale Parks and Rec pays the town of Stokesdale, uh, during the year. So how, how can we have a budget of a thousand when we have one, one, uh?
We don't have, we don't have any budget yet. So if, if, if what you're saying is maybe we should, based off, uh, the usage from Parks and Rec, maybe it'd be reasonable to increase that line item.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, uh, everything in the building has changed from the, 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 the accounting system that had been used here for so many years. I mean, every, you know, every line item, the, the format, the, the whole works. What I am used to seeing, what helps me is to have the three-year history, going back three years, or maybe even five years, for each line item. And the budget versus actual for each one of those years.
I think, I think that's a very reasonable request for some line items. Historically, I mean, dating back to the period you're speaking of, Tim, you know, I wanna say that there could have been. you know, I want to say that there could have been fifty or sixty line items, which was, uh, which was a lot to track. So I think to, I, I, to your point, if, if the names of the line items stay the same year over year over year, it's, it's much, much easier to build a, a running history.
How far back can we go with the current line item system?
Two years.
Two years. That would help.
This would be the third year.
Anything can be done, it just would.
Well, no, I, I mean, you know, certainly, I, I can't turn the clock back to the way we used to do it. You know, if I could, I would, because you could track every dollar that came in the door and every dollar that went out. You know, I'm still trying to get used to this. There was a period of time there, I know where, at least myself as a council member, I went to something like eight months without being able to get any financial statements. And even then, after that, some of them didn't make any sense. Numbers were jumping back and forth between the budget enterprise fund, I mean, excuse me, the general fund and the Water Enterprise Fund, to the point where I finally threw my hands up and gave up. So, there's going to be a period of time back there, even if we go and get the old monthly financials, there, I think I could get in the minutes and, and locate the, the period of time where I would recommend that this council not rely on those numbers. And if we went back deeper than that, then I think the numbers would be dependable if, if we needed to do that for some reason. I, I, you know, I don't know what it might be to look at the historical record of the number of water meters we purchased in a given year or, you know, landscape expenses at the park, or whatever it might be that we need to investigate. But, you know, for those on council that may not, may not know this, there's just a period of time there where I, I, you know, just quite frankly, I don't, I don't trust any of the town's financial records.
I'm familiar with that period of time, and I would have, I would have gone nuts had I been on council.
Maybe we need a line item for mental health checks here or here.
I'm thinking one for birthdays. You know, Tim, you've, you've got good points. I- i- if, if that's a request you, you, you would like to make of Kim, I certainly support that. It, 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 it's not a simple one.
Yeah, I don't, we have to merge the new with the old here somewhere, and, and just saying what works for me is being able to see that three-year history going back. I, I, you know, this, this information is, is great, but if I have a line item I'm interested, I wouldn't. Let me see if I can pick out something here. Membership and dues, you know, I don't really have any way to go back and look at those invoices and see where our money's going for membership and dues. I, I know from memory that we pay quite a bit to the League of Municipalities.
That's an easy line item.
Yeah, for that membership, but, you know, whatever it might be, certainly, any council member can dig into this, and Kim can find the information, or Ms. Martin can. But if, if we did very much of that, we'll, we won't have this budget done till Christmas. And so I wa, I was looking for whatever shortcuts we could take, but it just simply helps me to have that budget versus actual going back at least three years. And, and you say we could get two, so, so maybe we ought to at least shoot for two. But I, I'm, I'm just one council member here, I, you know, everybody else may have a different opinion.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion for the, in the next meeting, the April Budget, Special Call Budget Workshop, that Kim add a column that includes the FY twenty actuals, in addition to the FY twenty-one that's there, for both the Water Enterprise and General Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Jim?
Can we have discussion on that?
Sure, please.
So if you do that, well, it's not going to be an exact match.
It's, it, it's going to be doggone close, and it's going to take time. It's, it's, it's not a, it's, it's not a, it's a reasonable request. You know, that it's not a unreasonable amount of time, it's, but it's time. But, you know, I think, I, I think any reasonable request to, to the finance officer, I will support that.
Is, Mr. Rigsby, can you, is there a thing, think of a better way for us to?
No, I'm just saying, just thinking back on the, the budget process, and, and I'll use example. I know parks, we have combined some categories, and, you know, and, and that's just my concern is going back to that period when we first came on council, when we first started crafting the current version, that going, going back, a- as well-founded as the idea is, I'm just, I'm just voicing some concern that it's not going to be an exact science because of the merging of, of categories and deletion of categories that we didn't need, or whatever, you know, and I just want to make the council aware of that. It's not going to just be another li, a direct correlation to the, across the board.
Yeah, I agree with Jim. I think if, if Kim uses the actual audit, like she did for FY twenty-one, I, I think we're going to get reasonably close that Tim will, and, and I would like to see it, too. I think Tim will like the spending in FY twenty-one a lot better than he did in, in FY twenty, but.
I think, one thing, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe you're not looking, you're thinking about what items are in these lines. Is that correct? I mean, you know, like you said, the, the membership and dues, you'd like to see the, you know, what we're paying for membership and dues. And where I'm getting to on that is, I know we're, I think we've got it on the agenda, that's a computer for the mayor's office. And were we not going to set up a, a system to where we had read-only access to the QuickBooks?
I already have, Mr. Jones has access at this.
I, I have it for the Water Enterprise Fund. One I have doesn't include the general fund, or at least not that I can tell.
Can he go in?
Two links, you got two, you should have received two emails, you have to set up two separate accounts.
Okay, well, I certainly admit that I'm challenged in that particular arena. Can, can you go in that and, you know, put this, put the number in for one of these lines? I'm not familiar with what setup is. And then pull up, you know, like the, the membership and dues, and it'll show what we've paid out?
For the. Export, I've asked you this for a million times, export the line item, export the category in any expense that falls under it. For FY, the detail.
Okay, yes, absolutely, I can do that, for the, are you talking about for the nineteen and twenty, I mean, for the twenty?
Twenty-one.
I mean, that would be big, because you could go through every line item you was concerned with and look at every single thing.
No problem, yes, I can definitely export what is in there, for sure.
You know, and I, I think we'll probably, I don't know, I don't have a vote to go, but I'm sure we'll probably end up with something that we can, that we can do, and then we'll have read-only to, to do that. And I'm not saying not to do the actual, but that, that would be more detailed if you was concerned. You know, there's some stuff I'd probably like to look at, too, I don't want you to have to.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem doing that at all, at all, because I, I remember when I first came on. I was, I could have gone, this was a, this was a huge challenge when I first came in here.
We know all about it.
It was a major challenge. And so, and I even requested, you know, because there was just way too many line items, in my opinion. And even Mr. Rouse said this was too much.
Yeah, I remember he said, for a while, we didn't do it, remember?
Yeah, and, and so, it was very appreciative when council said, let's compress this thing some, so.
If we, but if we got access to look, pull that up, you know, we can see everything that's been spent in it.
I will send that to you. Rigsby, Foy, and Jones has it, and I can send it to you as well.
Certainly, certainly, we've compressed the line items, but from over a short period of time here, the budget has almost doubled.
Well, I, I would, I would encourage you to look at the budgeted expenses after the reimbursement.
We can always cut it in half, you can figure out how to do it. Well, I didn't say I had an easy answer, but the, the point, at this council, and in future council, and past council, they're always going to have their own viewpoint with these kind of things, and, and that's the council's job. It's our job to watch this money and see that it's been right. But those line items in the past, depending on what you were looking at, I may have considered it to be too much myself, but that's what the previous governing board elected to do. And those, I would have to look at it year by year, but it's, it's, for many years going back, our, our monthlies were fairly, fairly detailed with line items. And so, those individual line items were there to help the town council, the town's managers determine where the money was going, and, and, you know, keeping an eye on those various categories. And if it's, you know, tuned in enough, we would have been able to observe a substantial change in any line item. You know, it's, it's not worth our energy to track, you know, petty cash or overdue library book fees or something like that. But certainly, you know, the major expenditures for certain things, if, if you had a year where there, you know, they went up twenty-five or thirty percent with no visible explanation, that would be something that all of us should be looking into. And so, we, the, the, you know, we, we have to strike a balance between too many line items and too few. And I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not sitting here, I don't have any answer for that, but, but.
I did mention to Derek about, Tim, I did mention to Derek, I myself would like for council, when I do the reports monthly, to put behind it, you know, a detailed ledger or whatever, you know, if you wanted something detailed, or if you have the QuickBooks read-only, you can definitely go in and see anything and everything you want to see, too. And you can print out your own detail for each line item.
I, I like the idea of QuickBooks read-only if a council member's at home and wants to pull something up, but maybe if you, maybe if you could provide, you know, a, a document provided from the finance officer is, is, holds a lot more weight than me trying to.
I mean, I'm, I'm definitely fine, because I have even, I have, I feel like that, that should be, because when you look at a line item that, you know, and you see that we've spent, for instance, I'm trying to find something here, in here, you know, forty-five-hundred dollars in, that's not a good example. Housekeeping for eleven-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-seven dollars, I think you should, when it's got housekeeping, printing, office supplies, and software, I think you should have a detailed list behind that, so you can see what that eleven-thousand dollars was spent on. It makes me feel better, too, because I think that it should definitely all be transparent all the way across the board. Not that anything is not, but, you know, I think that at least if it's laying there in front of you, you've got it. And if you have questions, you can ask me anything about it. Or Dale, you know, if there's office supplies or something.
And Ms. Thacker, while I got you here, I happened to notice this last night, I was sitting here in the meeting and thumbing through last month's printout. We have a line item for marking water lines, the proposed budget being a thousand.
Hold on, I gotta get the water.
It's three sheets from the back on my setup. It would help if these pages were numbered, if we're all going back and forth. And so, last night, I believe the number I was looking at for the entire year was twelve-hundred dollars. I got it off the table out in the hallway, and we, thus far, this budget year, we had spent six-hundred. From, from my recollection, the town used to spend about thirty-five-hundred dollars doing eight-one-one relocates. I was a council member when the state changed the law and, and basically made the town responsible for these things. And so it's hard for me to believe that we hadn't spent but six-hundred dollars thus far this year. I remember Yates charges something like eighty-five dollars an hour to provide that service to the town. Is it possible that that's just being included in their general invoices?
Yes, because what's under the eight-one-one is actual bills from eight-one-one.
Well, is Yates billing us separately? Are they identifying the eight-one-one invoices, segregating those from the rest of their invoices, work orders, et cetera?
Those are, yes, those are all under contract operations. Those are not, anything from Yates is all under contract operations.
Then I would, just to using this as an example, Mr. Foy, I would, I would argue, well, maybe we need to do away with line item marking water lines eight-one-one if we're not going to utilize it, and have Yates segregate those invoices and, and put, put them where we have a line item. You see my point?
I just, can I interject? Isn't that two different things? The wa, marking of the water lines by Yates is specific to their task. The eight-one-one is where a citizen calls in and eight, to eight-one-one, and they contract a, a, a random person, whoever they use, to come out and, and mark your line in your yard. Yeah, I believe it is, because Yates don't come out to my yard to mark my yard.
They, they marked mine for the, for the pool.
I think I can help. The town had to join the eight-one-one system, we pay like a subscription price for that, and we're part of eight-one-one. But when the eight-one-one ticket is sent out for, for that locate request, you know, like one goes to the phone company, one goes to the power company. If it's in Stokesdale, the Town Hall gets one to locate the town's water main that are on, that's on the right way, not in your backyard. And so the, the Yates has a, I think we have a contract with them. I, I got it somewhere, who knows how long it'd take me to find it. But I was part of that, setting that system up and negotiating, voting on that, and that's, that's how I remembered. And I remember that being about a thirty-five-hundred-dollar expense. You know, at the time, I thought, well, maybe we can find somebody cheaper, and I know that I tried to call some, some outside vendors myself that did locates. And as it turns out, Yates was giving us a pretty good deal, because nobody would touch this for the town. You know, for, I mean, they wanted like a minimum of a thousand dollars just to come out. And so, you know, through that process, what I remember is about thirty-five-hundred dollars a year. And so, I'm, I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong, but if we're, if we're not going to track that separately, there's no use having a line item in the budget for it.
No, no, I understand, I'm just, and I, I wasn't differentiating between the water line, I was just saying, because I know obviously Yates is not checking for a phone line in your yard. So we're, we're obviously paying somebody to do those, so we probably do pay different vendors, I would think, for different utilities.
The, the town Water Enterprise Fund is a utility, and we're responsible for doing those locates. If a contractor or citizen calls the eight-one-one system, it, it comes into this building. We're the one, we're the responsible party since we operate that utility. Just, it's solely for the water lines.
All right.
And.
When we get the eight-one-one request here, we send it directly to Jean.
Okay, so we don't do anything with like phones and stuff?
No.
Okay.
But to Kim's point, she gets a bill, I sign it, from eight-one-one.
Yeah, it comes from eight-one-one.
And I think what Tim was saying, we have to pay an eight-one, you, you had to go under some kind of contract, when the state mandated this.
I, I think I saw something like a two-hundred-and-fifty-six-dollar subscription payment to the eight-one-one system. The eight-one-one, those, those folks, I think, are a nonprofit owned by all the utilities in the state, or at least the major utilities. I don't know exactly how it works, but I just know that we're probably fortunate that Yates is able to do this for us, because I think it'd be a problem finding somebody, or, or having to hire an employee and train them, and buy that, the equipment, that gizmo that they use is, is high dollar, you know. So, I just, I've been down that road trying to find somebody else from the town, and at the time, I couldn't.
Okay.
So I'm just using that as an example of, of, if, if, if we're going to have these line items, we need to be using them properly.
Okay. And that fee is thirty-one dollars and eleven cents a month, so that probably is the exact subscription you're talking about.
Sounds about right.
That's under the eight-one-one?
Yeah, yeah. And, and while I'm asking for stuff, Ms. Thacker, if it's easy, one of the things that used to help me in this building every year, or from time to time, was to get a printout, I, I used to get from Mr. Pulliam, of about the top ten or twenty vendors in terms of the payout we pay them per year. So I'm, I'm pretty sure we probably pay Yates Construction the most, and on down the line. That I have found is a useful tool for council to, you know, it just kind of will demonstrate the bulk, the bulk of where our money's going.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion just as a reference point, that Kim also export out the expenditures year-to-date in one document, and last year for FY twenty-one by vendor, and share that in Excel form with council, and, and to sort that from highest to lowest by vendor.
Do you mean to make a motion or just request? Let's, since we've gone this far, will you make that your motion? Let's, since we've gone this far, will you make that your motion and let me second it?
That's my motion.
I'll second it. Jim?
Uh.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Any further discussion?
Uh, I'd like to just ask Kim to, to redirect us and just go over the general fund. We, we, we've, we've gone over revenue. Personally, I feel good about the revenue, uh, with the, maybe the loan exception, I, I, I wanna, I'm a little bit wary of that state collected revenues at three fifteen. So I know that that data's out there, uh, and, uh, and I've got, I've got the old audits at the house, and I might just take a look at that. See if we overshot a little bit, or maybe it's reasonable.
And am I noting, um, about the town hall and park facilities? Because Tim, he did make a valid point on that as far as the soccer fields, because that's a.
So.
It's at a thousand now.
You know, if, we can make a motion, but if we keep making motions, you, you know, the staff's gonna spend in some, you know, crazy amount of time on this. I personally would like to see it at three thousand to support, uh, support what Tim's saying, because it does align with the data.
Let me get to my spreadsheet here and do that, because if not, I will mess up.
And the reason it was lower, so much lower the year, uh, before, was likely because of COVID and limited use.
Okay. I moved it up, and again, you know, it's not final, but I moved it up on my spreadsheet.
But just for the, for the next budget meeting.
Three thousand. Okay.
All right.
And then we've got, um, okay. So let's move to, again, the park investment, um, I've already told you guys why I put the fifty there, um.
Does, does everybody understand that? That the, the small-town development grant that we will get will only have permitted uses that would likely go to either the park, or I guess the events or community line, uh, the park makes the most sense. In other words, we couldn't use that fifty thousand for small-town development to pay for salaries.
Okay, understood.
All right.
Okay, and then down under two thousand for cultural and recreational, uh, that's the events community, I'm sorry. The parks, electrical repairs, cleaning and lighting, um, is for the park, that, that's six thousand dollars. Then the economic and physical development for advertising, for planning and zoning, and planning fees, planning and zoning, which that's a, the planning and, the planning fees are twenty-five thousand, that's set, unless they go, unless Guilford County goes up, of course. And then the advertising, that's for, you know, when we have planning, um, board meetings, and that's for those fees for the advertisements. Then down to general administration.
And, and as everybody follows, Kim's going over that, you know, there are two data points to reference. You know, looking to your right, what was spent last fiscal year, the actual, and then to the right of that is what we spent through seven months, year-to-date. And, uh, just a comment for council, uh, I believe that we, I, I believe we need to examine our planning and zoning fees, especially when you, surrounding public hearing. Uh, I don't believe our fee schedule, uh, includes verbiage to cover the cost of, uh, the advertising for a public hearing. I can give you an example of last year, where we had a citizen make a, uh, text amendment request, uh, to change our ordinance, uh, aligning our ordinance. Uh, that request was two hundred dollars, I believe, for him to get the public hearing, uh, and we paid about nine hundred dollars to advertise that. So, uh, I didn't like that. That, that would be a regularly scheduled town council discussion, but just something for all to think about. The town of Summerfield, for example, they have a flat fee for things like that, but then on top of that, plus the actual cost to advertise for, for the public hearing.
Now, you're talking about that street closings, that two-hundred-and-fifty dollars doesn't come close.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Town was real broke during text amendments, I mean, there's, you know, everybody can. Four or five people signed up to, for a text amendment of two hundred dollars, and then we had to advertise, you know?
Oh, I mean, two, two hundred dollars is, is nothing compared to what the cost of the town is, I mean, you know, there, there, there's attorney time when you look at a text amendment.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, you know, s- something for council to look at, uh, I appreciate staff sending out that fee schedule. I think there's some other, uh, I think if we're able to gather, uh, a fee schedule from towns similar to our size, we might have a better feel of it. But I believe that we should include in our fee schedule the verbiage, uh, or the cost to, uh, advertise these public hearings in the newspaper. The cost is significant.
There is legislation in Guilford, that have been approved for Guilford County, I don't know the details, where you can do electronic advertising now. Guilford County, it's my understanding Guilford County is the only municipality, only governmental unit that utilizes that, none of the other municipalities.
If, if you can dig that up, and as long as we're following the statute, I would.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to see that. All right? Kim, we're down to general admin.
We are. Um, administrative expenses, fees and, um, education, we're at five thousand dollars. You see that the, if you can see for fiscal year twenty-one and this year, we are hardly using any of that. The advertising for not zoning-related, um, is twenty-five hundred dollars. Membership and dues is at ten thousand dollars. Travel and conference for staff and cans, for staff and council, um, that's in there for, you know, if there's any conferences for, um, our clerk, um, deputy clerk, or town clerk, interim clerk, water clerk, finance officer, I guess, thing, anything to that category is for, if we have any conferences or anything for that to go to. Um, town hall repairs and maintenance. I'm starting at fifteen thousand, but, you know, of course, that, that always, you know, is, can change at any time. As you see, last year fiscal twenty-one was sixty-nine thousand five ninety-one. Year-to-date so far for us here is ten four eighty-three. That does not include the budget amendment we just did.
Sixty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars, anybody got any idea where the big-ticket items were in that number?
Air conditioners.
Where are we at?
The town, the, uh, hall repairs, town hall repairs.
Forty, forty-five hundred. Uh, I also believe that.
I'm looking it up too.
Yeah, I would not be surprised if maybe some of the, uh, setup in here went in there, but I'm, I'm, I may not.
Yes, it did. The twenty-some, twenty-six, uh, let me just find it, about that.
And this is, this is where Mr. Rouse assigned that expense to in the audit.
Yes, he did.
And, and Tim, when I say, the, the, the YouTube, or the YouTube and the cameras and the microphones and all that, uh, we got a, a COVID grant for about forty-five thousand dollars, and I believe that was twenty-two or twenty-three thousand dollars to set up all this in here.
So that was put on the repairs and maintenance?
Must were Mr. Rouse assigned.
Mr. Rouse did, but it there is my understanding.
Well, it just would have been a property improvement in the world that I live in, or a capital expense.
Kim, to be clear, did you take the actuals from the audit?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yes, the audio and light, okay, twenty, okay, Stokesdale Heating and Air is ninety-one hundred dollars of that. Um, the audit, audio and light, uh, is twenty-five thousand, then fifteen, so it's twenty-seven. Yeah, those are the main huge, large-ticket items, and I can definitely print this out if need be. I think I can.
And we'll be able to see that with the document you shared with us.
Oh, yeah, when I do that, you're right, you're right. So yes, when I export everything to the Excel, all of this will be under there, under the Excel for that. So then we're at the, um, office equipment purchase and repair. I know that was a little high last year, and this year also, that has to do with the computer, the new computers, and, um, I think, um, the new computer guy, the IT guy came in and he put in, um, the secure, the, for the server.
Kim, I'm.
What?
I think we amended that budget, it's even higher now. Uh, I'm not sure if we've seen, was the actuals occurred in February, the payment for those? We'll, we'll see it when you send it.
Okay. Then the housekeeping, printing office supplies and software is at twenty. That, that category, I think, definitely needs to be.
That's definitely imperfect.
Detailed, yeah, detailed out for sure. Postage is, uh, we're at a thousand. Insurance and bonding is nine thousand. Lawn, lawn and outdoor maintenance is forty-five. Town hall electricity I have got at fourteen, internet and phone is eleven-two. Security and alarm, we're at thirty-five hundred. IT, eight thousand. So the total general admin, I'm at one fifty-three-two. And you see the fiscal year twenty-one was at two oh three, seven forty-two, and then the actual for seven months is at eighty-six thousand four ninety-three so far. Then we're at legal and professional is next. The audit, um.
I do want to note the lawn and outdoor has been cut more than half from two years ago, and that the, I believe it looks better outside now than it ever has. So I think Jim and Jimmy have done a good job on that.
All right, well, everybody.
Um, the audit, uh, this year was thirteen eight sixty, so I just rounded that up to fourteen for this year. Legal and attorney fee, uh, there are no more accounting fees for, because I have now, I'm now an employee, so I'm no longer a contract labor.
And to be clear, that fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-six was only for, uh, you know, that wasn't a whole year's worth of expense. I believe you went, became a town employee in November of twenty-twenty. The prior year, I believe that the accounting fees, your fees were, you know, roughly forty-five thousand, pretty, pretty close to your salary, so.
Um, then of course, uh, the attorney fees, I've got it at fifty thousand, and you see this year, we're, we're only at nineteen one fifty, which I like the way that looks, but.
Funny how that works.
Tom probably don't like. So Tom probably don't like.
That retainer's for ten hours, and he only used five hours in January, so.
So our total legal and professional fee, services are at sixty-four, and that's with the audit and the attorney. And then we'll come down to the payroll expenses, the FICA, the, that amount is actually just the stipends and the town's ho- halls, mm, town hall staff salaries at seven-point-six-five percent, which is the FICA amount that the town, that town hall is required by law to pay, which is your social security and Medicare. Um, mileage reimbursement, I did put two hundred in there, as you see, that's, we really, we have not done any mileage reimbursement, um.
We probably need to with Robyn's travel to Chapel Hill. Have, have you submitted that expense report?
We are.
Yeah.
Well, her virg- her, um, clerk school was virtual.
Oh, never mind then.
But if you still want her to attend the certification class, it will not be virtual.
You can't beat a good in-person class. I hate virtual learning, but not just me. I'm glad you took it, though.
Payroll processing fees, you see, since we moved from prime pay to ADP, um, our fees has, have significantly dropped, half, actually. Um, so we left those, I left those at twenty-three hundred. Town hall staff salaries, I've literally just rounded it up to one sixty-five-four. Health insurance is nineteen-two, that is, um, eight hundred dollars a month per employee, per full-time employee. So sixteen hundred times twelve is that number for the, um, health insurance. And of course, it includes the dental and the vision and disability as well. State retirement. Dale, is that eleven point, what was that, eleven point seven?
Go look in my files.
Do you remember that, Rigby?
I wanna say eleven point.
Eleven is, is sounds familiar, but.
I thought it was eleven-five.
Eleven, yeah.
Exactly, but isn't it April before they vote on that?
It is, but I, it's in this year's budget, so I put it in, in for the upcoming as well, just, you know.
And Dale, when you get a chance, you know, it's not pressing, but could you follow up with your contact to see where they stand on this? I think April is a timeframe that I recall.
I got an email from him last week, and I'm gonna pull all the information they need, they get, and it has to be in by March thirty-first.
Okay.
Them to hear it at the.
Has council provided everything you need in terms of a vote?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, stipends, thirty-four eight. So our total payroll expense will be two forty-seven, seven fifteen thirty. Then we're down to public safety, fire inspection and investigation, um, that is at ten. We haven't had to use any of that.
Yeah, it's, I think that's a tough line item to predict.
Yeah.
I mean, past history and this one doesn't indicate future performance. So that was a low year, but I don't know if that's indicative of, I, I, I really don't know what drives that. Tim, do you?
I'm sorry, I was on another line, I, can you repeat?
In, in terms of fire inspections and investigation, what drives that cost for the town? Do you know? I mean, I, I have no idea.
I, I, yeah, I knew we had to pay for the fire marshal services. You know, they, they typically go around, do regular inspections, and then sometimes they do spot checks and re-inspections. I don't know if we have to maintain a line item in there in the event there was a fire in town. I mean, I don't know, maybe town hall burned down, and if that'd be the case, the town is.
There'd be nobody in it, of course. Yeah.
That'd be the case, I, I, I'm thinking the town probably has to pay for that investigation that the Guilford County Fire Marshal would conduct, and, you know, the sky might be the limit, depending on what resources came into play with that.
Sure.
I don't recall us having any big fires in town, any history with this to go point back to. I guess we'd have to go, kick, you know, contact the county or look at the contract we have with the county to.
See, on this one, I'm not even aware of a contract.
Oh, yeah, there's a contract. Ms. Martin, is there a fire marshal contract in the building?
I don't know, I've seen a contract, he came in the fall, I don't recall when, did an inspection of this building. May not be what you're referring to.
Now, they do an inspection of the business, local businesses, about every three years.
No, I don't, I don't think you're understanding me. There, there's, somewhere in this building, there's a master contract with Guilford County for, it's like an inter-local agreement between the town of Stokesdale and Guilford County, where, wherein we buy certain services from them. That was, that was the, you know, the starting point, and then every time something's changed or added, uh, like a supplemental contract's written. You've never read this, apparently, but it gets very confusing, because they might start talking about animal control in the, at the same time of talking about the fire marshal in connection with the sheriff's deputy, and so it, it, you have, you have to have all of these laid out in front of you to understand it, because if they wrote one today, they would tie it back to that first master contract, or it might refer to something in one of the contracts in between. You and I, we're gonna have to find this, this, you know.
Well, I'm aware of the animal control one.
This had the animal control renewed.
Of course, I'm aware of the planning one, but.
I mean, they just changed it.
This one I'm not aware of, but obviously we have intermittent.
Number of Guilford County files in there, they're all labeled Guilford County. I have not spent any time in them, so I could not tell you.
I got the feeling I may be the only one in here that just. I got the feeling I may be the only one in here that just has read them. Anyhow, it might be worth council's time to not necessarily read it, but just look at every page, you know, just know it's there. And so thus, it might be a hard question to answer exactly what they're doing for the, for the money because you might have to review all those contracts to find all the, all the verbiage that addresses the fire marshal service.
This is also a benefit of your general code book. All of that would be referenced in there. Who provides those type services, animal control, your fire, your public safety, all be addressed in that code book. Will be the actual contract, but it'll spell out where those services are provided from.
Well, I got the feeling if the county makes us pay for our own fire marshal inspections and re-inspections, that probably they would expect in the event of a, a loss for us to pay for the detailed investigation.
It, it makes perfect practical sense and I have no idea.
Do, do we have, do we need to have staff call somebody down there and get the answer for us, or? Do you think it's worth it?
Sufficient look through the files first would, because it probably just something that, that we've never just had a nee- a need to look at. You know, because it, it really hasn't changed a whole lot. Obviously, you can see by the actuals, it's not a big, a big financial burden on us, so we probably hadn't never really looked into it. It's probably in there, like you said, we just hadn't never actually looked into it.
Well, m- m- Ms. Martin, I, I used to like the idea of having all the town's active contracts filed together. How, how, how do you currently do that?
Well, they're all still right in the cabinet where they are. I have started indexing the ones that I have had some dealing with.
You, you, I think what I hear is you feel pretty confident, confident that all the Guilford County contracts are in the same spot. Okay.
For, for, for the last ten months, we're golden.
Okay.
Right, you know, I'm, I'm sure things are on before that, but.
I remember like seven of them or something like that.
I'm sure they're there, uh, you know, I, I don't wanna belabor that. I would like to see that contract. So that brings us to, I guess, the end of the expenditures before the reimbursement.
Under, I'm sorry, and this would come out in the detail Excel, like you said. Um, I actually just pulled up all what I have in QuickBooks, which is actually from one-one-nineteen, um, going back to eighteen. Gives me nightmares. Um, but, so when I go into the nineteen, all of the fire, they are, we're pay, we pay them quarterly. And it looks like the last time when we paid them in, um, February, this past February, that check was for three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty cents. And that is for, um, the second quarter, and that goes to Guilford County Finance Department. And then there's an annual inspect- inspection, which is only seventy-eight dollars. But they have, but now they messed up, Dale, back me up on this one, when they, remember they did not bill us for that fire, um, so I had to pay them. That's why that's kinda funky. That had nothing to do with us, that had to do with them billing us, so.
If we just wrote a check for that much in February, that's not reflected in this?
No, because it's in Feb- yeah, it's in February, right, because this is only through January, what's right here.
All right.
Okay.
Well, then when you reduce the operating expenses by the water reimbursement, it looks like we have a twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollar surplus?
Yes.
The budget does, does need to be balanced.
Yep.
I'm gonna ask for a vote of cancel to, to allow Kim to put ten thousand dollars in the event slash community category. The parade normally costs us between four and five thousand dollars a year, so I'm asking for an extra five thousand dollars on top of the parade for, quite frankly, I don't know what it would be for, but.
We could have our own float.
We would still need to take a vote of cancel, have any expenditure.
Well, that, that'd be the case. How about we split the difference and make it seventy-five hundred? Wouldn't want these people to think we made a money.
I'll accept it.
I'll second. Jim?
Uh.
Derek?
Uh.
Jimmy?
Uh.
Tim?
Hi.
I'm also hi.
So Kim, in future budget meetings, if you could just populate seventy-five hundred into that, events, uh, twenty-one hundred?
And that, and that's up from five, right?
It's actually down from eleven.
Oh, excuse me.
My, my ten from eleven was the Tim Jones compromise, but you beat me on that one, Tim, congrats.
It rarely happens, Mr. Foley.
So that one's moving to seventy-five hundred, twenty-one hundred. And that is set in stone, is what you're saying going?
Well, it's, it would be included in your draft for future
Oh, okay.
Budget meetings, and then if we don't make any further changes to it.
I've got that in there. All right. Okay, let's see here.
In, in terms of further balancing the budget, because we do need to balance budget, uh, you know, I, I don't have any ideas on, on the rest. I might in April or May. I also reserve the right to ask.
How much, what, we need to, we need to put some more money somewhere?
I've, you know, you know, I think we need to see how it shakes out, Jimmy, but we need, we're likely gonna need to increase building repairs.
That's, that's probably a good one, yeah.
I think, I think it's reasonable to think that the major, the balance should go there, given that the HVAC units won't be installed until July, which is next fiscal year.
That leaves us sixteen thousand, four seventy-four eighty-one right now. I'm just making my notes.
Just as a general idea here, it, it, it would be easier for me if we always kept our worksheet segregated between the, uh, water enterprise fund and the general fund such they weren't stapled together. I mean, I, I keep that stuff ten foot apart at home so I don't mix it, because it's just, gets out of control for me.
That is.
Anybody got a stapler? He needs a staple pull.
Pull it apart, staple it for you.
Well, I understand that, but it's the, um, so some, some of the formatting issues run together for me as well.
Yeah, certainly, uh, stapled these separate would be a good thing going forward. Does he, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns about general in terms of, uh, rough draft first pass discussion? All right, that brings us to water. Tim, if you thought general fund was muddy, I think water's muddy, but. Let's go.
Okay. Back, black, backflow preventer fees. Twenty-five hundred. Damage.
Do, do wanna remind council on the last year, we voted to decrease that fee to fifty dollars, uh, per request. I believe it used to be three hundred.
But would you refresh me, what was the backflow preventer fee?
It, it, anybody that has, uh, is, that has a swimming pool or a, uh, that, or that it's a business sprinkler system, first would need to come to the town and fill out an application and write a fifty-dollar check to the town, and then the town, uh, Priscilla affords that to Guilford County. And then the property owner is responsible for hiring a, uh, a, a plumber, I guess, uh, that would install that. And then the property owner, I believe, needs to have that inspected every two or three years, uh, and that reported back.
I, I know what they are. I know where they're required, but I'm still fuzzy what the owner is paying the fee for. Is that for the inspection, that the, 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 the original installation? It, it's not the maintenance check, and it's not, uh,
No.
It, it's a one-time fee that, that, that they, they're basically are, are buying the, uh, purchase. Is that
It's.
To pay us for the equipment?
No, it's, it's, it's a one-time fee. I mean, I, I wrote a check for me today for fifty dollars, uh, for Priscilla to contact Guilford County and forward them my application, and that's the extent of the work for the town of Stokesdale.
And that fifty dollars is the only income?
To the town of Stokesdale, and it, it used to be three hundred-ish.
You recently made an installation at your house?
I recently filled out the paperwork. The installation will be a couple months.
Is pending, okay.
That line item just covers that fifty dollars?
It does.
So we've done.
Y'all wanna change that fifty dollars, I got a check to rip out.
When we go up?
We're saying we're going up, retro act?
Uh, no, but, but, but that's the, that, that's it.
As far as I know, the property owner provides the double check. Is that right? We, nothing has changed. The, the plumber, the property owner.
You've gotta provide the double check. Siphon break. Everything comes on me then.
And it has to meet the town specs, of course.
Correct, and then the county comes to, actually, I don't know that last part. I'm, I'm assuming yes, but I don't, I don't know what their, the county's gonna come and check it off to when they do their inspection of it. I don't know.
I believe they do. Once we contact the county, I think they have to come out and do an inspection.
So we're estimating that we're gonna have fifty backflow preventers installed, if math right.
I don't know, there's a lot of houses on it. They might be putting pools in.
What else would this be installed for, other than, say, a swimming pool?
Sprinkler system that, uh, if, on the town water.
Okay.
Swimming, swimming pool sprinkler system. Or there's, there could be some commercial applications out. The, the commercial properties are already required anyway. For the residence goes, that's usually the two things that trigger the requirement is the, uh,
I mean, this year we've got six hundred dollars.
I think Jimmy's on to something that maybe that should be decreased to twelve hundred.
I mean, this year it's six hundred dollars or something.
So, so Kim, if.
Derek's didn't include it in that yet, though. It'll be six fifty soon.
Yeah, right. So I'm okay with you reducing that to.
Let's, let fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen.
Just pick a number, fifty, I, I mean, that, that'll work on it.
Yep. I'll make note of that.
I'll just, okay, done, entered. The damage penalty, uh, or we finished with, with the backflow, sorry, okay. The damage penalty is a meter resetting. That obviously always varies. Um, but I do know that, um, well, I'll just let y'all decide that.
It's a, it's a tough one to discern because if I recall from the budget, it doesn't, or the audit, it doesn't really even have that as a line item.
No, because we were reimbursed, and the reason being, I think, is because we were reimbursed that amount from last year.
Yeah.
The damage was made to be paid back or something. I can't, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was correct.
In some instances, the town clerk can levy a civil penalty. I don't know that we have ever done it, but I can't remember that amount. Think it's in ordinance fifty-four or sixty, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Uh, investment income, you know, that's, the, the future's not looking any brighter there.
It is, it is.
Two or three years ago, our, our, our cash was returning a lot more money than it is now, but, you know, two thousand, sure.
So, hey, let me ask you a, a question on that. So with the, um, interest rates and, and the going back up, will that not increase the bond returns?
The interest rates only affects the, uh, the federal interest rates affects like mortgage interest rates and things like that. It has nothing to do with banks at this time.
We had that comment with Tammy at the, or that conversation, Kim and I, with Tammy at the Bank of Oak Ridge, and she said, you know, our CDR investment or investments may eventually go up as the Fed increases the rates, but they usually lag much further behind than, for example, like mortgage rates, and so.
They just went down. I mean, the, the interest rates just go down?
Our CDRs, we're, we're like at point one-seven now. We, we were north of two, two-three. You're right, mortgage rates just hit an all-time low, but, uh.
Don't expect the Fed to go up on the interest rates. If they do, with it, the country's gonna be broke.
They, they're saying a quarter.
They're saying a quarter point.
The taps and connection fees, um, that, the taps and connection fees, the water capacity fees, um, and actually on down with the water sales, those, um, I took in consideration of, you know, the growth of Stokesdale, um, the houses coming in and, um, all the development. Uh, you see that in twenty-one, just for the connection fees, we were at fifty-three. This year, seven months in, we're at forty-four, seven. Um, the water capacity fees, of course, those fees, um, are offset, you know, in the expense because we have a separate account for those.
Let's talk about that.
Okay.
Uh, so the water capacity fees, I think the, the, the statute calls them system development fees, and that was implemented, or I guess the law changed in either two thousand eighteen or nineteen, whereas any income we receive there needs to go to a capital improvement fund. And that's what, you know, Kim has done, uh, so, so the, that income is directly offset by a cash outlay into another actual separate bank account that we have. And there are per- permitted uses, uh, we, we had, had a good study from, I think McGill, from either twenty-eighteen or twenty-nineteen, that outlined the permitted uses for, uh, expenses on the, uh, from the capital, using these capacity fees. They are to be held in a separate kind of a capital improvement fund. However, no, no disbursements can be made from that fund legally. It would need to be transferred back into the water enterprise account, so. You'll see that offset for this income on down in the, uh, budget. Uh, the taps and connection fees, you know, a big driver of that expense, of course, is growth, but, uh, we did have to increase our price by roughly eighteen percent to, uh, directly correlate with a price increase from Yates. I would feel comfortable, uh, increasing that, uh, if council does. We're forty-four year to date through seven months, I should say.
What's the difference between a tap fee and a connection fee as it pertains to our operation here?
Well, uh, Pr- Priscilla's your best resource. I believe we charge, do, do we charge, is it now fifty-four hundred?
I have fifty-six.
Fifty-six, so.
Or just on your schedule fees and charges.
Okay.
You've got it right there. And the total's fifty-six hundred, though. I do know that.
So for example, if
It's broken down.
For an existing home in Stokesdale, if a water line runs in front of their home, but they're not currently connected, and they're currently on a well, but they wanna connect to the town system, they would need to pay us fifty-six hundred dollars, and we do make a margin on, on that. It, it might cost Yates thirty-five or four thousand. It might cost us two.
I, I know, but I'm serious about my question, 'cause I wanna be sure I understand this. I know what a tap is, I know what my definition of a tap would be. So what's the definition of a connection? It, it says tap and connection, like we have two different fees that are coming into play for this line item, and I'm trying to remember what the other side of that is. There's something I'm missing.
I don't, I, I don't know, to be honest.
Something that found its way under our paperwork.
Yeah. Did you have that same question when you were on council? Because I don't think the verbiage, verbiage has changed.
Oh, I don't, I, I, I'm trying to remember if I have forgotten something, you know.
Problem's gonna gravitation.
I don't know.
Maybe it'll.
Should the, should the and be an or?
Or should it be separated?
The, my purpose for asking is that Yates, I've, I guess, still cu- charges us one price for a nearside tap and another price for a far side tap, and we're averaging them together.
I, yes, to answer your question, and I thought that we, yes, they absolutely charge us a different price.
Okay.
Uh.
So, so once the, the water meter yoke is there and installed, we, we wouldn't charge the homeowner to connect to their own water meter. So is, are we charging a connection fee to set a meter that's separate from the tap fee?
There are, I know there's two separate, there's two, one seven hundred and ninety-seven fifty's capacity.
Well, the, the same time here, I'd be glad to cover it with Priscilla, and maybe I can find a way to answer my own question, but I thought maybe somebody knew.
She knows her stuff, so. Uh. And then water cells, I mean, that's. That, that is a significant increase. You feel good about that, Kim?
Sorry, I was looking at this other, um.
Do, do you?
What are you basing that off of?
I am basing that, um, from growth, the growth. We are at three oh seven now, three hundred and seven, we're seven months in, at three hundred and seven thousand. Um. And I'm also basing that on the growth, uh, for the town.
So what's three oh seven divided by seven times twelve?
Forty.
What I'm doing.
Hold on, I don't know, I gotta do that, forty-some thousand, let me do that.
Twenty-six.
Huh?
That's five twenty-six.
Rev, she's right on the move.
That's a, that's a pretty good. Pretty good swag.
Mi- Ms. Thacker, if it's easy, I'd like to know what we spent purchasing water for the two thousand and twenty-one budget year.
Uh, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
One thirty-nine.
Mm-hmm. And this year to date, we're at ninety-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-two. That's for seven months.
So. Ninety-four, five seventy-two divided by seven. Just, just spot on here. All right, and then, of course, House Bill four thirty-six. Uh, which the monies would need to be encumbered by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three. In that figure, it would be assuming that we don't have any expenditures this year. The remainder of this fiscal year that did not decrease that figure. Right?
Yeah, and the late fees. I mean, if y'all wanted to like, I don't, I just don't. Sorry, I know I skipped, I mean, I think we skipped that one, but the late fees, they were, they've been set high for the past several years, and I really lowered those because you can see the past two years right there beside you. Or, well, you can see twenty-one and then seven months of this year, and. However. I do know that from two thousand and twenty, uh, is it March, April, mid-two thousand and twenty until, I think, July of twenty-one, we were not allowed to collect late fees due to COVID.
Right.
So, um, but still.
You know, Priscilla's made some headway there, I think, uh, that twelve seventy-five will go up probably pretty significantly.
Okay.
Does that water sales, does that increase have anything to do with cold water tariffs?
Uh, certainly that would be part of, uh, the system, the driver, tree, tree line, uh, Boone Meadows, uh, Northwest Meadows.
Yep.
That's, uh, those are large drivers. Dawn Acres.
There's a lot getting ready to happen, and I.
Yeah, another big factor of that is just number of customers increasing, and, uh. I, I, I still. I still want to do a closer, I have, me personally, I want to have a better understanding of how growth impacts our cost of goods sold. Uh. You know, Yates is busier, uh, I think we're gonna need potentially more infrastructure or engineering, uh, support, and I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. But, anyway, we'll get there.
Okay.
So, Kim, your total income's one point eight million dollars.
Yep.
All the numbers make sense. For taps and connection fees, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars seems low, I mean, I'm fine keeping it low if we want, you know, from a conservative, conservative standpoint, but if we did want to, uh, bump that up, I think there's room, in my opinion.
I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
We get it.
Water purchase.
Kim, I ran the math, I'd feel more comfortable at one sixty-five, given the year-to-date.
Okay. Is everybody else, I guess everybody else is okay with that? The water purchase? Let me get back.
Bond and insurance. To my recollection, we, we've never made a cash outlay here.
No, we have not, it's just been in there all years past and.
Right, and I think we were too timid to take it out, but.
Don't know.
I, as long as you and I have been doing this.
There's no record, mm-mm.
That's either, uh, terrifying or. I don't know.
Contract operations is, uh, that's Yates, and it's also Gary Machunas, he's paid sixteen thousand dollars a year.
And that's for the privilege of us to use his license.
Correct.
That's not any work, that's just a.
So, so Jimmy, Gary, Gary's, well, actually Gary's salary is relatively low. Uh, the majority of the money he gets from the town is, is in that contract as outlined with Gary, uh, two installment payments of eight thousand dollars a year. For a total of sixteen.
They, we're budgeting a hundred thousand, we spent ninety-two.
Last year.
Last year fifty-nine, so far this year.
We're on track for one oh one.
Did, did I just hear you say that all of that was going to Gary Machusis, or is it, there's some other vendors receiving?
Gary's received eight of that fifty-nine year-to-date.
He'll get another eight in May, that's correct, yes.
Okay. So the remaining portion is, or what other contract?
I don't like the verbiage, but.
We don't, we don't have a contract with Yates.
We do not. I don't like the verbiage of contract operations, it.
That, that's why we.
It, I hate to say it, this is the way, it's the way, I don't know, it's the way it's always been, it's the way that I, I know it to be, and, uh, you know, I, I think I've bellyache to Kim more than once about the verbiage, but she's not gonna change it unless she gets direction from this body, so.
It's almost like implied contract operations.
Correct.
Okay, well, that, that's where I was getting to, I was gonna ask what contract did we have with somebody besides Gary Machusis? That was gonna be my question, so thank you for that.
Engineering, infrastructure, and consulting, uh, obviously, last year was a higher year because we had a, we had a capital improvement plan, some maps, and, and some other, uh, things that Hazen provided us. I think fifteen thousand, that was just kind of a plug, and, and that makes sense, Kim?
Yes.
I'll be honest with you, uh.
I'm not sure about that one.
Or, or so, it's water system is a bear, and, uh, the more you peel it back, and, and, and Tim is our expert, there, there, there's no doubt about it. The more you peel it back, uh, if there is to be an expert on council, Tim is that guy. There's a lot to it, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but there's some engineering support this town, I think, could use.
Uh, one thing that we're not doing, to the best of my knowledge, is the new subdivisions that are built in the town of Stokesdale, is not, uh, inspecting those installations.
Right.
And, and this was stopped, uh, McGill used to do them for us, and, uh, it must have stopped somewhere along about two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, without a vote of council, I don't know what went wrong, what happened. Far as this council knows, we're, we're not doing any inspections, right?
That, that's correct, and, and I've had a conversation with Gene, you know, Gene, Gene, Gene does a lot of good stuff for us, and he, he certainly can take a look at some things and new developments, but it, it puts him in a very difficult spot, because, one, he's not a licensed, uh, engineer. And, two, you know, he's essentially inspecting his competitors, Yates Construction's competitors. So, you know, there's always, if, if Gene ever sees anything that concerns him, uh, he certainly would let, let the council know. But at the same time, he, we, we, I don't know if we're asking him to do this, or if if we're asking him, we're asking him to do too much, but right now, he's our only eyes on the ground, boots on the ground, and that's, that's scary.
That's like an informal windshield inspection.
Right.
I mean, we, we, he's not being paid, he's not taking it, you know, any legal responsibility. It's, if something happens and, uh, you know, there's a big issue, costs the town a lot of money, the citizens are, are not gonna, uh, have expected anymore out of Gene Robertson, it'll be this council.
So what do you propose, and how much is it gonna cost, and how are we gonna pay for it?
Well, I, I propose we get back to, to conducting inspections like we've attempted to in the past. The cost, it, how much it's gonna cost if we don't do them? We've already got some, some issues that I have spoken to the council members individually about, and I don't think this meeting is a good, good place to delve into that. And so, uh, I think going forward, so far as the budget, we need to possibly put some monies in to provide those inspections, and I wouldn't know any place to get the, the numbers to plug in, other than looking back in the, in the previous budgets. And I'll get to one of my pet peeves, at the time, McGill Engineering, I don't think they intended any, you know, consequence from this, but they would, they would invoices for work that they were consulting, they were doing for the town. And on the same invoice, same statement, they would invoices for the inspection, so the town's accounting staff couldn't, couldn't really segregate that, that, you know, didn't know they needed to. And so as a consequence of that, I'm not sure if we can figure out what we've paid McGill, uh, per year, per subdivision. Because the, we, the only thing I suggest is we can get McGill's invoices out and scatter them out on a table, and see if we can arrive at some number for a baseline. Either that, or go to some other town and see how much they're spending.
And, and McGill, uh, I have heard nothing but good things, but they may not be, that company may not be the answer, there could be somebody.
No, that's just who the town was using, that, that, those, RJ Mosley with McGill, to the best of my knowledge, was the last, uh, engineer we had looking at new installations, to the best of my knowledge.
Again, January nineteen through June nineteen, that's when it stopped. McGill was paid, because again, that's all I can look back on in this QuickBooks at this time, they were paid, uh, ninety-five hundred dollars, ninety-four hundred dollars.
Yeah, but the problem is, we don't know how much of that was for, uh, conducting inspections in the subdivisions, and how much, they were also doing some consulting at the same time. I specifically remember having this conversation with Mr. Pulliam, and, and he didn't know that those two, the numbers needed to be segregated. He understood after, you know, I had that conversation, but McGill just, I guess they didn't think about it, they were just lumping those, their, their, their bills to, I mean, their invoices together into a statement and sending it to us.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's not gonna matter what we made, what we paid before, it's gonna matter what we gonna pay now, if we're gonna do it.
Well, I, I don't. That, that, well, um, how, how are we gonna arrive at it otherwise?
Well, this invoice says, for example, uh, it's got the invoice number, it says Northridge Phase Three. On-call service planning, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-five cent. If that helps any, I don't know if it does or not.
Can, can I walk over there and just look at what you're looking at?
Sure.
See what I got?
And I can probably find, pull the invoices.
Let's see what's looped right.
Oh, you're fine.
So did their invoice electronically populate with the town's, uh, QuickBooks?
No, the last finance officer, when she was doing this, this is what she would put in, this is what she put in there.
She manually entered this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, now, yeah, that's, that's, that's more detailed than I've seen in the past.
And then if we go back, let me show you right here.
All right, just say it right.
Right here, these were the others, now I'm not sure, so for instance, let's just.
Do you not hear my opening?
I've always wanted to hear.
Say, uh, well, right there.
Thank you.
Can be a better place to spend.
I'll tell you. I got my family all mad at me.
See what I mean?
You're gonna come back to me?
I do.
Go celebrate your birthday? This is seventy, this is seven, oh, yeah, yeah, this is the big one. One of the big ones.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna go into. My daughter's in Holly Springs. My sister. My sister and I had the same birthday.
Oh, really?
Right.
Nine years apart.
Oh, wow.
She's older than I.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Dad was consistent.
See, I was not, I was not, I, on this number, I was not happy because I felt like that.
They're gonna be, they're down in Apex, which is right next door, and, uh, we're gonna get together for, buy the lunch on Saturday.
An agreement for sure.
Well, get to celebrate then.
My guess is twelve hundred dollars a phase, you know, based off of that one invoice.
Do, do we have an idea why we would have stopped it, is it required by law, or is it just something that we do to protect ourselves? And, and what, I mean, we stopped it for a reason, I'm sure, because it's, it sounds like it had a dead stop at the end of a budget year.
It was nineteen, it looked like the last time anything was written, June of nineteen.
I, I don't think there's any federal or state law requiring us to do inspections, but to protect the town's interests, that's what we need to do. I doubt if there's any other town in the state that doesn't inspect the installations, and I, I mean, I don't know of any.
I'm just curious why, why we would have stopped it, I mean, it had to have been a discussion at some point about it.
I could elaborate on that, but I'd rather not, but, um. It, it, when we, we, when the council, previous council I served on, when we started this, it, you know, we had all the other things that this council has to deal with, and it was kind of in its embryonic stage, so to speak, and we were trying to get it, get, we needed to do inspections, and at the same time, we needed to refine our inspection processes as we went. We didn't have the benefit of, of having a year to get an inspection program in place before we had to use it, so that, that, it was kind of hurried. And, uh, it never got to the point where we, we had a, a detailed checklist, for example, there's some things, I think, that would be easy enough for an engineer or a public utilities guy to, to help us with, to get, you know, some, some formal checklists in place and, and kind of, uh, give us some guidance about how to do this effectively.
What is it exactly they are inspecting, is it the initial connection for the extension of the subdivision, or?
There, what's happening is that the, the, uh, the developer hires their own private engineer to design the, the water mains, then there's a public, you know, we have to have a public utility contractor that they pay. As long as they're a public utility contractor, the town allows them to do this installation. And so in our specifications, I think I could find it for you, it basically requires them to interface with the town of Stokesdale's engineer and our representative regarding the inspection, so it, uh, the town needs to operate in such a way that it's, we don't reasonably impair their work, but it might require that developer to leave the ditch open for a day. While our people got there to take a look at it and verified that the installation was in conformance with our specifications. And the other things they might do would be, you know, check for leaks, or supervise the chlorination, you know, proper chlorination. Check and see if the, the valves that are used meet our specifications.
Gotcha.
Fire hydrants meet our specifications, fittings, uh, some places that thrust blockings required, you know, they had to pour concrete and around elbows and that sort of thing. And then, uh, when they go underneath the state road, they need to put a, as far as I know, they had to put a metal sleeve in, and then our water main goes through that metal sleeve, so it's, it's not, you know, for an engineer, it's a fairly simple process, you know, some of it's Greek to me, but, uh, that's basically what we need to be doing. And, uh, you know. And, you know, we've got, I don't wanna elaborate on this, but we've got some subdivisions that with six-inch pipe in them, where the town specs were eight. So something, we're slipping out of gear here somewhere.
We need qualified, qualified boots on the ground that, you know, that doesn't have, you know, a potential conflict of, that's not examining a competitor's work.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying, we made a start at it previously, and we were kinda getting it done, but our system, it needed a lot of refinement, in my opinion, you know, some streamlining and it was kinda like the town was just learning to crawl with that process before we could walk, and then something happened, and we've gotten stopped, so we only have one invoice over there that's segregated where McGill charged just shy of a thousand dollars to inspect Phase Three of North Point, I believe.
North Ridge?
North Ridge.
North, excuse me, I always rename in that place. So, I mean, if we allowed twelve hundred dollars a phase and then we'll have administrative cost added to that, I'm just guessing, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand a phase, I mean, I.
Well.
Should we be passing that cost on? Or shouldn't we?
I think Jimmy Landers makes a very good point.
It's, it's something that I've, it's not lost on me. You know, we I wanna study the cost of the operating system, how inflation's impacted that, a simple example is, I mean, just start at the basic level of staff. You know, we did the right thing by giving them a cost of living increase. But hey, you know, but it's more to staff, it's more to it than staff. Yates fees have gone up, the number of units that Yates is looking at has gone up. We're at a point now where we've had to replace some meters with electronic water meters from a perspective of safety. You know, it can go on and on, I think the cost of water meters themselves have gone up. So, you know, if we're not examining both sides of the income statement or the budget versus actual, whatever you wanna call it, we're not doing ourselves any favors in the long run.
I'm gonna agree with my learned colleague Jimmy Landers over here, I think we need to add a, add debt to the fee schedule, the
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The engineering inspections, you know, we need to figure out how to word that, we need to get that on our fee schedule in such a way. And, you know, if memory serves, we may have been charging something like, you know, a basic four fifty fee and then so much a foot previously to, and had the developer paying, I don't know how we could, maybe Kim could look back in our receivables and see if you could find any evidence of that, I'm fuzzy about it, we might could ask some of the previous council members. And so to my mind's eye, that would be one way to do it, to have a flat fee, you know, minimum, you know, for a major subdivision, and there's so much a foot for the water mains, or, you know, we could have a ten-dollar fee to inspect a fire hydrant, or a thousand-dollar fee to inspect a fire hydrant, whatever it needs to be. You know, we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have some negative feedback from this, from the development community and what have you, until they get used to the town's, you know, new fees and new way of doing business with that. But if you talk to anybody in public utilities that's running a town, whether Kernville, Madison, you know, whoever it might be, I don't think there's anybody out here that is allowing these installations and not having somebody representing the town look at them. You know, I don't, I don't need them going over, you know, with a magnifying glass, I don't wanna zeal it, but I think we need to be reasonable and get that done somehow.
Do you have someone in mind?
Well, I mean, people at development, they, you know, they need to pay for the development, I mean, the water customers don't need to be.
Yeah, our, you know.
Paying for the development.
You know, that need be, you know, that's, we need to put that cost where it belongs, and that would be with that new development. Which, you know, we won't make too many friends here at the moment, but that's where it needs to be, I think Jimmy's right.
Yeah, certainly. Is that something we need to vote on? I don't think we need to vote on it, I think the discussion was good, you know, this is the first discussion, but.
Well.
I mean, we're gonna have to do that.
We're working on updating the town's fee schedule.
Right.
So we'll, maybe we can just make one vote on it when we get it updated or something, I don't know. But we.
You're talking about two lines in the budget, you're talking about a line of the cost, and then you're gonna be talking about a line if we charge a fee. So, we know, I mean, we're for the budget.
We need to allow for those inspections. And, you know, we need some engineering to get us started, and then either an engineering tech can do the inspection, or maybe a the public works guy, who knows, maybe, maybe we can work it out, Gary Machus is gonna do them, I mean, I don't know, you know, what his qualification might be to do that work, but certainly whoever it is, we gotta pay them.
Agreed, but that's, you know, it's a good discussion and something to think about. I certainly am supportive of, I mean, right now, it's the five of us that are responsible for this. I think, is that right?
Yep. Yeah, the buck stops with us.
So if we're not doing everything we reasonably should be doing, let's please find out what we reasonably should be doing and do it. All right, Kim.
Under expenses?
I'm starting to get hungry, so.
Me too. Okay, we are now down to dues and subscriptions, eighteen hundred. Postage is six thousand. And that has been, um.
That's confusing.
It is very confusing, and Chris has helped me with that some now, so.
You have that Pitney Bowes machine, or whatever it's called, you got that machine, and I think, I think Rex put that under a different line item than really where it should be, but.
Which that thing is gone, thank goodness.
Yeah. We're just using kind of stock we have for our bills, but I mean, look, what are we billing, seven hundred, paying seven hundred a month? You know, that requires postage.
Yeah.
Here to date, we've done six hundred?
I think we had some.
Well, that is something I do need to go back and look at, like I said, because I think that there was a Pitney Bowes machine that was ordered, was it a couple of years ago, I think it was, or I'm not sure when it was, but and then the staff decided, not this staff, but staff decided that, you know, that was not a good idea, so they got rid of it, and I do think that maybe Rex, I'm not real sure, I need to go back and look at his detail on what he did, however, when we're billing seven hundred residents, citizens, the math is easy, you know, we need to definitely have six thousand dollars in that column. There are some that, this was actually a discussion in the past as well, because we had the postage from the general fund. It was a shared expense in the general fund. So some of that expense is also being shared, I don't know, I.
It, it's not easy.
It's not.
I mean, obviously, the most of our outgoing postage is gonna be water.
Right.
Whatever we've been doing seems to work with the auditor.
Yeah, he hasn't said any, because I've even mentioned it.
He kinda puts it where he wants to put it anyway, if I'm looking at this correctly.
But I guess my question on that is, is do we keep the line item, do we keep the line item in the water for the postage? And again, it is hard to do that unless we just take what Dale tells us each month, what's, you know, being billed out as far as the water, the customers go. Or do we stop sharing it in the general? I guess that's where it gets, whatever you guys decide, I'm good with.
I'd just say not change anything.
Okay. Okay, the FICA, the seven sixty-five, that is actually the seven point six five percent of the salaries down below there. That salary is Gary's salary, I've got it at ten thousand, but as you can see, twenty-one was six thousand, six ninety, and year-to-date is thirty-nine, sixty-two, I think we're pretty much around the seven-ish mark, maybe a little over. Mileage reimbursement is two thousand, and that's where we reimburse Gary for his mileage. He submits an expense log to me each month, and he is reimbursed for his mileage. So the total administrative and payroll expenses are a hundred and thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. And remember, on that salaries, none of that is reflected from the salaries that come from the general fund. Because the general, even though the general fund pays for all salaries, because ADP will not allow me to separate, separate that. But each month, each, I'm sorry, each pay period, I do go in and do a journal entry and line item. What the water owes the general fund for Gary's salary and his FICA. So that is why there is a line item up here for the salaries in the FICA, and then you see the reimbursement down at the bottom. So that's why there are two separate line items there. Under repairs and maintenance, we have the chemicals at seven hundred, those are pretty much, as you can see, on target. Chlorinator maintenance, last year was twenty-four, sixty-two, this year there is nothing. I'm not one hundred percent sure what the chlorinator maintenance is, I don't know if that's an annual. Not sure what that is. Electricity chlorinator utilities, now see, that's been moved because Rex moved that from, I don't know where he moved that to, from the fiscal year, but that is the power bill that we pay, and it's fifty-seven dollars a month, fifty-one dollars, I believe, fifty-one, thirty-one, actually. It's pretty much the same thing each month. The water lines, we've already, the marking of the water lines, we've already discussed. I'm not sure what you guys, if you want me to change the verbiage as far as that goes, Tim? If you, you know, for the, that eight-one-one marking water lines, since I understand definitely what you're saying now. Or. Okay.
You know.
Maybe take out marking, I don't know.
I'm just saying, what caught my eye is I knew that a thousand dollars couldn't be enough for that.
Right. Okay. But all that's in there is that thirty-one dollars, like I said, that we pay monthly for them.
So as an extension, it must be coming out under contract operations in the Yates bill.
Right, because all of Yates goes under that contract operation. Yeah. I guess that's something we can touch on next time, maybe we can think about it. Supplies, water hydrant maintenance, five thousand dollars.
We spent four thousand, one hundred and one dollars last year and nothing this year. Do you have any idea what that four thousand dollars was for?
I'm gonna find out, try to anyway. That may be something Rex may have moved as well.
Water line and meter installation, general repair, in my opinion, that would be, I mean, Yates are the ones that are doing that in instances where that happens, and I think since we've been on council, there's been a few water line breaks, nothing big, or something up here near the school. About too long ago. There was something in North Ridge, maybe about a year ago. I think that's all being captured under contract operations for Yates.
I don't know if this is it, but I know we had a fire hydrant that was damaged. Where would that money be? That's right.
We do have.
You are right, I'm looking for it, I just found it. That was, okay, this bill with Yates was separated, it says, well, that was from the previous finance officer, it says repair of water main break, seventy-eight sixteen Nugent Road was nineteen seventy, but we will reimburse that, nineteen seventy-five. And then there was Northwest Meadows, Thomas Stanley Grading and Hauling. Let me see what this says. Northwest Meadows Extending Pipe.
Yep, like two thousand something?
Twenty-eight hundred dollars for that one. And then there was S and M E, S and, I say that wrong every time, S and M E, Athens Road. There was an issue on Athens Road for thirteen hundred and seventy dollars. So that's where the forty-one hundred, forty-one hundred comes from, Athens Road and Northwest Meadows. And I suppose, go ahead.
Technically, that twenty-eight hundred in Northwest Meadows was a water line, so it should really be under thirteen double oh eight.
Okay. It is actually under water lines, it is in the QuickBooks, it's underwater lines and general repairs.
So Mr. Rouse put it.
He might have.
Okay.
Yeah, because that is where it is in QuickBooks, right here. So back to the water line meter installation, general repair, that, I guess because we just never know what may happen, major league.
Yeah, he, Mr. Rouse classified that underwater hydrant maintenance.
Yeah, but it is, it was on, I don't know why he did that, maybe he, I don't know.
Yeah.
Then the water tank maintenance, a thousand dollars. To my understanding, there was a, they already did some water tank, the town did a major kinda overhaul of the water tank, having it painted and all of that. So I figured I didn't know if it needed anything, I just left that at a thousand dollars, because we haven't used anything the past couple of years on that. And then the water testing, at four thousand, it was thirty-one eighty last year, year for seven months, so far we're at nineteen forty-five, so that's kind of on target as well. Total repairs and maintenance is fifty-one thousand, two fifty. The water capital, that's the fourteen zero zero two is a transfer to capital reserve. That must match the revenue at the top that we were just discussing earlier for the capacity fees. The water capacity fees for your revenue at sixty thousand, and then it is offset by the sixty thousand, and that's because it's trans, it's put into a separate fund. And then the meters, electronic water meter change out at twenty-five thousand.
Let's, let's talk about why last year was so high for fourteen double oh two.
Oh, yeah, okay. We had not transferred, not transferred, we had not started the CRF, that's when we found out, we did the research on the capital reserves fund. And we found out that we had to have a separate fund for that, that we needed to be putting the water capacity fees into a separate fund. And as you stated earlier, we cannot touch those funds, that they cannot, they have to be transferred back. We can not write any checks or anything out of that, out of that fund, they had to be transferred back. And as for infrastructure, there was a list of.
It's confusing, there's a McGill engineering report from, I wanna say twenty nineteen, that's been useful for me.
I know that when we were researching all that and looking at that, I know that there was, yeah, that was confusing.
I've exchanged a lot of emails with the school of government on permitted use on that. From a variant. And if, from a very, and, uh, well-informed, uh, Karen Malonzy. And even those emails are confusing, so happy to share those with, with anybody.
The reason it is so high for twenty-one is because this should have been done in the prior year when the capacity fees. Um, it should have been transferred into that account, but, um, the.
We were writing a wrong.
Right, that's exactly what we were doing.
Okay.
That is why, that is, that, that number is so high for fiscal year twenty-one, and, um, we spoke with Rex about it. Rex said it was fine to do it, go ahead and do it, take care of it, so we did. Um, okay, then down to the electronic water meter change out, and then the electronic water meter new construction. The electronic change out is, I am assuming, is where they've been replacing the old meters with the new, with the electronic meters. Um, and then, of course, the new construction speaks for itself, it's for the new construction meters.
Kim, let, let you and I take a close look at, at the actuals for this year on this. Just the numbers this year just seem too low, unless for some reason we had a high inventory position on meters coming into this fiscal year.
We did, we had, um, we just wrote a check.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with that, but even, you know, I know they're.
These are the, these are the invoices that I have. I mean, you know, these are, um, are you talking about the eighty-six hundred dollars?
I am.
And those, those are made to Waterworks, those are, those invoices come from Waterworks. Yeah.
It doesn't make sense, but I, I don't dispute that, that's, something's not adding up in my head, but, you know, that's, that's fine.
We're, we're buying all our meters from Waterworks.
Yes.
Yes.
Are, are we buying those at, you know, counter price, are we buying them in lots, are we getting them to bid those lots?
I didn't understand your last question.
You, you think we're getting a competitive price on these water meters?
I, I, I have no reason to believe we're not, but I, I don't know that we've ever looked elsewhere.
Priscilla has.
Priscilla has, okay.
She's talked with Mueller, what's the company's name?
Yes, is Mueller.
We can buy them cheaper through this vendor, and I know I don't have the names right. We can buy them cheaper through the vendor because he gets so many of them, he can get a better price than if we buy them directly through Mueller. She called herself personally, and there's quite a bit of savings.
Do, do we have any idea where we stand with the conventional meters versus the electronic meters? How, how close we are to having them all converted?
Oh, I don't think we're close. I mean, my house, built eight years ago, you know, still has the conventional, uh.
We just did fifty last year, right?
Yeah, I would say, I would say more than half the town probably still has conventional.
Well, I, I, I've, I've lost track of that, I just know we started buying them and putting them in, and we've been buying them and putting them in, so.
Right.
And, and heard any report on it. And they're, they're, uh, you know, things are not cheap.
To date right now, the total, uh, is twelve thousand, five seventeen thirty-eight, because I just wrote another check. I had two invoices I wrote, so from seven sixteen twenty-one to two twenty-four twenty-one, we've paid twelve thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Okay. If, if anything, that may be a little high then, when you look at forty-five thousand dollars for those two, or for that one thing, where, you know. For some reason, there's two line items, we decided to never change it. But, uh, I mean, we're saying forty-five thousand dollars a year on meters, and I think that's high. Personally, I think we should, I don't know. I'm fine keeping two lines, I guess, but forty-five thousand for both is, is, is too much.
I agree. Because it's twenty thousand last year.
I mean. I would say thirty thousand would be a good number, but. It's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Well, uh, the reading this, there were no electronic meters changed out in two thousand twenty-one?
Uh, Priscilla's got a list of the meters that she and Jean worked together. There was a vote of cancel last year, probably last, last summer, maybe, uh.
It, it, it's not showing up in the column, uh, uh, over here under, uh, fiscal year twenty-one actuals.
No, um.
That's.
And Rex could have combined them in that one.
He, he, he could have, and, and, and that's fine, that's just, that's where I'm having a hard time when I add these two numbers. Knowing that we invested in that many more meters and Priscilla will have the, the, the right number, uh.
Well, since ten twenty-one nineteen to two twenty-four twenty-two, it is, uh, fifty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars.
So.
There you go.
So forty-five thousand for.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we're high. I mean.
Does that include?
I would kill one of these line, personally, I would kill one of these line items and just make it a total of thirty for whichever one we keep. Or just change it, electronic water meters, and that's the name of it.
I will do what you tell me.
No, I mean, I'm just, per, personally, I prefaced that with a personally.
Well, there, there is a point that I would make here, that the electronic water meters that we're changing out. Uh, or, you know, we're doing that for safety, as far as I know, in a lot of places.
Correct.
But it's not necessarily something we gotta do.
That's correct.
We absolutely have to buy the new electronic meters for new construction a- as we go, because, you know, that homeowner has to have a water meter. So in, in the past, I, I don't know, we've kind of, uh, made rough judgments of how many we thought we could buy out of the budget and, and get installed in any given year. And I think that's probably why, the, the reason for segregating them, although they're exactly the same meter.
Right.
And so, uh, you know, if you think we need to merge them, I mean, I, that's fine, but maybe we could always, uh, track it another way if we need to, I guess.
Well, with that, I'm gonna make a motion for FY twenty-three budget. That we, uh, consolidate the, the meters, uh, category sixteen hundred and just keep sixteen oh one and retitle that, uh, electronic water meters.
So let me ask you a question on that, um, so that's the budget. Would the, uh, new construction was not be offset by the fees that we collect for them?
Absolutely.
So that would be my only argument to, to, where the sixteen oh one is a negative outlay for, for the town. We're not, we're not getting any reimbursement back.
You're correct, sir.
So I, I would recommend not separating those, just based on that fact, that we can directly correlate sixteen oh two to a incoming fee.
Okay, um, that's, that's perfectly cool, I'll withdraw my motion, Jim. Uh, we just need to get, Kim, we just need to get the, the number that.
I'll get with Chris.
Chris will have that, uh, that won't be a problem. But still, forty-five thousand dollars is too much.
Right.
And, and, you know, unless we, we want to, uh. Keep, I mean, I guess we do have the option to change out the rest of, of the list that Jean has, and maybe in that case, we would keep forty-five thousand. I'm contradicting myself all over the place.
I would be interested in, in knowing that, because, um, I would also be interested in knowing that, is there a life, a life expectancy on the older meters? And do we need to be proactive in replacing so many new ones a year, just to, so we don't get hit at one time? And, and continue, you know, if it's fifty or whatever, just, you know.
And, and from an old meter perspective, that it definitely, if, if, if my water meter breaks, that's the town's responsibility to put a new one in. Uh, so that's a good point, I, I don't know if we, I, I think we should just, if, if, there's a faulty meter a- at a, at a property. I think we should replace that as it comes up and not necessarily replace something that's working. In terms of replacing anything that's working, I think we should only, my personal opinion is, we should only do that if, in terms of safety. Uh, certainly, reading my meter in my cul-de-sac is not a safety concern, but reading one on one fifty-eight is.
Yeah, I agree.
They have a, Mr. Rixby, they have a long lifespan, I mean, they, they last a long time. I, I do know at one time, we couldn't take a meter out and reinstall it somewhere, because the standard for the lead content in the meter prevented us from doing so. So even though we might have a good meter that could be reused, because of that law or that rule, you know, we had to toss that meter and, and buy a new one. But they, they last a long time. We used to have a failure rate of about one a year, from what I can remember. That, you know, you, you get, water customers for, you know, they get a high bill, and for whatever reason, sometimes they convince themselves something's wrong with our water meter. You know, what we used to find was that there was some other cause for it, you know, they'd left a hose bib on, they had a leak, or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And from what I remember, we did, you know, the town didn't have over one bad one a year. We would, I think, sometimes send them to Winston-Salem to their meter shop. I don't, I don't know what the town's been doing in the last two years, but that, that, they're almost flawless, based on what I remember.
Did, are some of those that she ordered, if I, I may be misunderstanding, but didn't she, there, aren't there right many on reserve of these that were just purchased?
Most of the ones she had, and she just placed an order, I think. You know, if that's what you, when you just build, pay, she was getting close.
That's what I, that's what I thought that she said.
Placed another order. I think they've all come in, though.
We might ought to. We might ought to have her check the supplier and, and see how the supply chain looks for those.
Yeah, that's why she, yeah, that's what she was telling us.
We, we, one of the reasons the town uses Mueller, because it's a USA-made meter, where, for example, Badger, I think, is made overseas, if I remember right, et cetera, et cetera. So, but, but anyway, that, that might be a reason for us to, you know, to order a few extra possibly, or, or at least take that into account with our, with our planning. If, if there's gonna be a, some supply chain issue with them. I'm, I'm hearing from all kinds of different people, you know, they're having trouble get, I myself have experienced trouble getting, getting pipe for my own projects. And, uh, I'm just hearing all kinds of difficulties from various companies out there, they can get everything they want, all the way up to that last three percent or what have you. Just, just like our HVAC units, and, and so you just never know where it's gonna hit you these days. So I think we better check.
Okay.
Okay, just to clarify, so sixteen zero zero one, wh- what are we, what are we doing with these items?
Stays the same.
Let's leave.
Except for the amount, the amount, change it to thirty.
We're, we're gonna leave the two categories after further consideration. Changed our mind.
Okay, and what about the amounts?
Split it.
Uh, it, it depends, do we wanna make more of a concerted effort to replace, uh, what has not been replaced? And Jean, Jean's got a list, and Priscilla and Jean are working together on that list. Some of the list has been complete, something that I heard in the past is that you don't wanna do it all at one time, because they tend to go bad all at one time.
Correct. Well, that, that would give us a little bit of latitude, we could, we could stock up a little bit. And if we didn't have any supply issues, we can go ahead and install those and use them for change out. But if we're, if we're having trouble getting them, we may have to lay off our change out program, because we gotta have them for our new construction installs.
That's a balancing act, but good point.
That's why I get paid the big bucks.
Yeah. All right. And the rest, as you go down, see, is just your reimbursement expenses, the cash outlay from the water enterprise back to the general fund for these shared items.
Mr. Foy, I don't think we answered Kim's question. How do you wanna split the thirty thousand?
I, I think we're gonna keep it at forty-five to have an extra buffer for, to mitigate potential supply chain issues.
I got you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're good.
Yep, uh, just to reiterate what Mr. Foy said, the overhead reimbursement from the general, to the general fund. That shadows from the, um. Other budget on the general fund.
So we still will have a surplus, Kim, even after some changes you need to make.
Yes, we are at thirty-five thousand, nine nine four eight nine.
But we discussed that we're gonna, the cost of water, we're gonna increase that to one sixty-five?
Yeah, maybe that's not my formula, hold on.
And the backflopper of enter fees, we're gonna drop to fifteen hundred in the revenue side?
So, all right. What's going on with the thing over here? Okay, that changed it to thirty. Then what did you just say about the revenue? I, I've, it's already been changed. I'm at thirty thousand, nine ninety-four eighty-nine.
Just the backflopper of enter fees, lower that to fifteen?
Yes, that's at fifteen. My income is one million, eight zero one, five eight one, seven five.
Okay. Water purchase.
Water purchase is one sixty-five.
I don't think one hundred will cover it for contract operations a- as how we define contract operations today. I don't think we're far off. But it, I mean, I, I feel more comfortable at one ten. But that's just me.
Well, you've got the room for it.
That you do, uh.
Yeah, thirty thousand.
How does, I'm gonna make a motion that we increase, I have Kim increase contract operations from one hundred thousand to one hundred and ten thousand for the next budget draft meeting, special workshop.
Is there a second?
Special meeting.
What was that amount?
One ten.
Contractors, the, uh, account number twelve, double oh two, contract operations, from one hundred thousand to one ten. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second. Rixby.
Jim?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Tim?
Jimmy's asleep, aye, and I'm an aye.
Then the last things, I think, I'm not gonna make any more motions, but I think we need to really examine engineering, uh, and infrastructure consulting. I think we also need to examine this thirty-five thousand dollar, number thirteen double oh eight, water line meter installation gen- general repair. I perceive that a lot of that's going into contract operations. So.
At twenty thousand, nine ninety-four, do you want me to plug that somewhere for now, or?
Leave the surplus for now, and I, I think, uh, I think, Tim, we'll, we'll look into a few things that possibly we may be behind on doing.
Oh, for the engineering, okay.
Engineering and, and, you know. Maybe there's some other things too.
We definitely need to do something about engineering, because we don't wanna have another deal like we got at Boone's Landing.
Agreed.
Citizens comments from the internet? Closing comments, council? Jim?
I have no comments.
Uh, just wanna thank the staff for being here, uh, in preparation and, uh, enjoyed it.
I did.
God's sick. Jimmy?
Happy birthday, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
That's right. Mister Spinn, not couldn't be a better place.
I tell you, I couldn't think of anyplace better to be.
That's right.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, I would also wish you a happy birthday.
Well, thank you, brother, you took me to lunch.
And a good time was had. I'd like to thank, uh, all our citizens that might have attended, had he not had something else more pressing to do. It's, uh, a little distressing not to see anybody here, and, uh, I don't know if it's minutes, need to note that we hadn't had anybody present during our, during a meeting, or online or not, but it seemed like it'd be a good idea to me. And so, um, thank you all for your patience with my questions, council and staff, and, uh, that's it.
Well, you have to admit, it is a, it is a exciting time, so, uh, I have no other comment, we are adjourned.
Oh, mate.
All right. I'm sorry, I should have called the vote, right?